Could you hold this for one second?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good. Good.
We're awake.
Thank you all for coming to our meeting today. The fourteenth, and we'd like to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One call please.
Lynn Sylvane?
Here.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Joey Downsack?
Here.
Louise Zista?
Here.
Rick Tolls?
Here.
Martha Frank?
Here.
We have approval over minutes for a regular meeting held on March 24th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on March 24th.
Sis?
Go ahead.
We have a motion in a second for approval of our March 24th, 2025 meeting. If there are no questions, we'll accept them as presented.
Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the bills dated March 21st through April 10th, 2025, in the amount of $103,987.55.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second for our March 21st through April 10th, 2025 bills that we are presenting in the amount of $103,987.55.
I have some questions about the bills. So we have $11,312 for attorney fees. What is that for?
That is for the property next door to the town hall on the west side.
What's the total expense on that so far? Do you know?
Right now it's $11,312.50, but I can't tell you offhand how much the total is.
Okay. At best difficult times, I don't have that answer. Is that something you can get before the next meeting?
Possibly.
There is a $225 charge for Cindy Hoffner. What is that?
I can answer that. So we have started going through our records per our records retention schedule, and Cindy Hoffner is coming in and doing that for us. And then you'll also see a Works Leads to Independence for $115.20, and that's for document shredding.
So who is this Cindy? And how did we pick her?
She was actually the clerk of works. She retired from there. And she has done this for other places, and she's very good at what she does.
Okay. So we just knew about her picture? We didn't interview anyone or look for anyone else?
Right. I doubt anybody would be...
It's a daunting job.
That's...I mean, I don't even know what... She barely charges us anything.
Is it ongoing?
Yeah, right now.
Yep. So she hasn't been doing very long. How much more do we expect to pay her?
Well, I can't guess that. This is just for basically a month. So depending on how long it takes to go through all our records that she's gonna sort and organize, and we're gonna get rid of the records that we're allowed to per the... Yep.
Okay. I skipped over two of the bigger ones that I wanted to mention. $21,970 for the salt shelter, and that's being reimbursed for the grant, right?
Yep.
And then there's playground mulch, $8,500. Is that just for this park here?
No. The one by the elementary, the old elementary school too. And that's reimbursed as well through a grant.
And how much was that last year?
Being due last year.
Okay. So you don't know if that's a good price or not for what we got?
I'm guessing it is, because they come sprayed in for it. So we don't have to like spread it, but you want it.
And do you know how many cubic feet we got or cubic yards?
I can probably find it out, but I don't have it in front of me.
That was all part of the park screen, if I remember correctly.
Yes, it was.
And they will be here in May. We'll check. They said they'll come in May.
So out of the $100,000, at least $30,000 is being reimbursed, right?
Yep.
Maybe that's it out of the $100,000. And then you've got $20,000 for sidewalks. Is this a down payment, or is this for...
Down payment.
And then you also have $1,029 for PVC pipe. What is that for?
Storms to repair by A-plus engineering. Replaced what we...what I used, and got a couple more sticks because there's still more that needs to be done back there.
And Crystal, in the time I've been on council, I don't remember another bill, another month charges being $100,000.
Nope. I would agree with that.
Okay.
No other questions? The proceeding of the vote?
Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Joey Downsack?
Yes.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Martha Frank?
Yes.
Lynn Sylvane?
No.
Louise Zista?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Root?
Oh, I'm Tom Hughes. I live on Village Lane. Last year, I made an update on the town hall committee progress. I'd like to do another one. We've had so far six events this year. Last year, if somebody would say we do six events in three months, I thought they were crazy. So I'm very happy with what we are doing now. We left about six to eight weeks left blank in the summer. That's the painting. I wish to thank you all for the donation of the paint and the labor and all that to spruce up the building. Our goal this year is to increase attendance on the events. The events that we pay for, if we can get a few more bucks to the seat, we can get a little more revenue, we can afford a little bit better talent. Well, it stands to reason.
Yeah.
We had a gentleman that we wanted to hire that he turned us down because of what we could paint. Also, I'm very proud of our relationship with the Horizon Youth Theater on the Bowling Green. Half the events are theirs.
Yes.
I would say without putting a pencil on them. There are a bunch of high school kids on Bowling Green. They definitely have a very talented bunch of actors and actresses. And it's...we've been watching them mature for the past two years, and that's basically very enjoyable, watching them mature. In order to help out with the attendance, I'd like to pass out some schedules.
Great, thank you.
You have many ways around. And I have more if anybody would need more.
And Tom, what's the average attendance to each one of your events?
It varies. Some of the Horizon Youth Theater ones, they say that they can average three people for every cast member. Some of them have been...we have filled the bottom of even half of the upstairs. And some of the ones that are...we say aren't that well-known, we're lucky to get 40. So it varies.
So 40 to 200?
Yeah. You take the good with the bad.
Thank you.
And I also...I don't think that the storage society would yell at me, but I also included a rhythm on the river.
Thank you.
Let's watch it out. Randy Rivers? Spring, fall, dragon, and streams, and dragon walk application.
It doesn't look like Kathy's here yet.
Skip that for right now, or we'll go to the other. Same. Travel by the river application.
Mayor, last year, there was an issue with the restrooms on Saturday. Who is responsible for the public restrooms on...when there's events on the weekend? Is it Billy? Go ahead.
I believe it should be, if I'm not mistaken, the people that are using events, police them, and take care of them.
Okay. I didn't know, because I got phone calls last year. So I just wanted to know that, you know.
I don't believe we need that either.
Okay. And then for your schedule of events, it shows beer by Wildside, which we know they have electric permit, but then it also says Dunderitas.
So the Arts Council have a two-day local permit.
Okay.
That's what we did last year.
Okay.
It's kind of exactly like what was last year, only a lot moves it this year.
Okay.
It looks exciting.
Jimmy Buffett?
Yeah. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the application for use of public property for nonprofits for the Grand Records Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rapids Rally event, July 11th through the 13th, 2025.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second for the use of... For the use of public property for rally by the river. It's scheduled dates again?
July 11th through the 13th. 14th.
11th through the 13th.
Since on here the 13th, but I guess we have to...the schedule says 14th.
Which I might have missed it and adjusted a lot of times.
I think it's got some date discrepancies. We skipped the 12th on the floor.
Oh, my gosh.
So your annotations come... Correct. All right, that's all right.
I know, but I'll adjust that again. Yes, I copied and pasted from last year's.
They go on the right days?
I'm sorry?
They go on the left days?
Yes.
Christine Wilbleau?
Joey Downsack?
Yes.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Martha Frank?
Yes.
Lynn Sylvane?
Yes.
Louise Zista?
Yes.
Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is that Cindy?
Thank you.
Rally days?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So that would be the Friday, the 11th, I imagine.
So it's the 12th?
11th and 12th.
Yes. That's the one that's identical to last year, just by music.
Got it.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the application for use of public property for nonprofits for the Grand Records Arts Council for Rally by the River Kickoff Party, July 11th to the 12th, 2025.
I'll second. We have a motion in a second for Rally by the River Kickoff Application for dates of July 11th and 12th, 2025. Proceed with the vote.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Martha Frank?
Yes.
Lynn Sylvane?
Yes.
Louise Zista?
Yes.
Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Joey Downsack?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
She's supposed to be here for the Grand Records now?
Kathy was supposed to, I thought.
Well, there's time for the next meeting, because the first one is May 17th. We've got three applications here. May 17th, June 21st, and October 18th.
Deputy, is there any report that you'd like to give us at all, or...
I don't have anything specific. If anybody here has anything that you want us to watch out for or anything, let me know.
I know that there's a lot more kids up around the pool now because baseball's starting and stuff like that. It's a little more activity going on up there. Might be good to kind of watch that area a little bit.
Sure.
And I believe also the bridge area. You know, I live right up front street. I see a lot of people just...
Like stop sign violations, or...okay.
Coming off the bridge.
Okay.
And heading towards Calhoun.
Gotcha. Okay.
And we appreciate all you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As you noticed on the bills, there's a code written on that. I would suggest that everybody signs up for that. From the Sheriff's Department, and it's excellent when you get notified about something that's going on. Get on their website and direct to it by a few keystrokes. If you watch, if something goes...there's bad weather or something going on, but it's a very valuable tool for you. For one thing. I think it's worth the time to have it on your phone. I did have a meeting with Joe Schrod about getting together with some type of a group that can add some economic input. I think he's got five people right now. I'll confirm that with Joe later on. I've got a couple more that are interested. We are also possibly going to be working on the canal, but at some point, when we do start working on the canal, it's going to be closed. We'll need traffic going up and down, foot traffic, because it's going to be dangerous for people when they're cutting trees down and stuff like that. It's going to be no flies on them for a few days. Just heads up. That's about all I've got right now.
Is that scheduled yet, John?
Not yet. It's not. But it's...we talked about, just a few minutes, and we'll get a schedule on it soon. Go on with your report, Chad.
Okay. I don't have a little lot. Strayer wants $20,000 up front for the sidewalks. He's trying to get all the schedule cleared so he can come in and just wipe it all out. So he's working on that. I might have Panning come in. They put a new catch basin on the corner of Third and Bridge Street, the old one. I've got all that rain in the sidewalk washed out, and the laptops started caving in, so we had to get that done as soon as possible. Lake Erie Tree Service got...they got a quote from them to take down the 84 trees. They're actually $30,000. So they're three grand under the other place, Joey Tree. There's not, like I said, there's not a lot of places that have the equipment to do what these guys can do. So it's kind of hard to get three quotes. He's got a big grappling crane that he can...he wants to drop him in the canal and then pull him out that way, which is about the only way I think we can really get it done.
Is he removing the wall? Like he's taking all the wood?
Yeah, as far as I know, yeah. Because a lot of it's...it's not...I mean, it's all dead and it's garbage trees. But we need to, you know, vote on that, get it... The sooner we get a vote on it, if we do approve it, the sooner we can figure out when to get that scheduled. So we're not doing it July 11th.
Thank you.
We did replace about 50 to 60 feet of tile by A-plus engineering in that alley where all the old trees were at, willow trees. We got...I have some pictures of the roots set right there. It was pretty bad. This is all trees we pulled out. And then there's another picture of another... We never packed full, so the water was getting through it. So all the catch basins were flooding from all that rain, so we got that taken care of. We are going to have to...we had Camp Tech come in and they jetted it out as far as they could. And it seems like there's more collapsed pipe in there we have to take care of, so that's why we ordered more pipe.
Is that the only reason you knew that was bad? Is because the catch basin was overflowing?
We actually...we worked on it...when I first started here, probably eight or nine years ago, and they were full of roots then too. We just didn't do it the whole way. But yeah, that's kind of...
You weren't doing cameras down them or anything?
We did do a camera probably four years ago, and we found parcel collapse in that too, where the gas company drilled a hole through the side of it, but...
In that particular area?
Yep. And we're thinking about putting a catch basin. I'm supposed to get a quote in the alley, because a bunch of water runs off their yard, goes to the neighbor's yard, then up and down the hill, and gets into LB Electric's, their shop. So we're looking at doing that. I gotta wait for a quote. So that's something else. I'm going to get them all shown to the parks. As you guys can see, it looks really nice. And then we also have a resolution to authorize participation in the ODOT road salt contracts. I think we have to have that done by May 2nd. So that's something we need to get... Oh, that's all, yeah.
And you said the quote for Lake Erie Tree Service was $30,000?
Yeah. And the Joey Tree was $33,000.
And that's for 84 trees?
Yes.
So the second quote saved you three grand?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to have the administrator contract with Lake Erie Tree Service to have the 84 trees taken down off the canal for $30,000. I'll second.
Is Lake Erie a company we've used before?
No. I actually called EnviroCare, the company that has done tree work for me, and he recommended them because they have the equipment to do it.
And you've seen their security of insurance?
I'll get it before I sign any contract. They're a pretty big company, I know. Says they do a lot of work in the polling and around the cities.
No opportunity for us to do onsite mulching with all the trees we're going to take out here?
What, like a chipper?
Yeah.
I mean, we have a pile back at our place that you guys want to mull. So that's just huge. But I mean, I can ask them, but they're usually just...probably just going to grab the trees and put them on a trailer and haul them away.
You can't...you can't mulch the trunk of a tree.
If they have a big enough...they've got a chipper, they might be able to, but it's not going to be like the best mulch. It's going to be like what we had back at the...
Yeah.
It's not like this out here. It's extreme.
Have some of the trees been laying in the canal for a while?
Well, which ones?
The ones that are in the water. Are there any in the water?
There might be, but right now there's a big log jam at the beginning of the canal, so nothing's getting in here. I did talk to the parks, they're just trying to get a grappling truck to pull the trees out. But then they're going to have a bunch of debris, because it's all backed up right there.
Yes, okay.
That's up in the west end.
Yeah.
Now, we have a motion in a second for approval of a price for $30,000 for North...
Lake Erie Tree Service.
Lake Erie Tree Service for the trees on the canal for cutting 84 of them.
Martha Frank?
Yes.
Lynn Sylvane?
Yes.
Louise Zista?
Yes.
Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Joey Downsack?
Yes.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I can give you all a copy of the bank, right? For March? We have one note on there. If you look at it. The bank took one of our checks that we wrote for less than the amount that we issued it for, so they are correcting that on our next payment to 64 cents less than what it showed them. And I asked them, I said, "So you give the company 64 cents? And you charge us 64 cents?" Yep. I said, "Okay." And then we have the ODOT resolution that Chad had mentioned. It is due back by May 2nd to ODOT. So we can give it to regens, but we're going to be...we won't be able to give it to third regens. And this is to allow us to participate in the road salt. Save us quite a bit of that road salt. Sure.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope. We talked about the records. Oh, yeah. One more thing. The recycling bins at the building, we have nobody taking care of them anymore. So basically, the village is either going to do it or we just, I don't know. Hopefully, people don't abuse it like they have been. It was the Cub Scouts and Tachin taking care of it.
Okay.
And they are dwindling, so they can't allow them to do it anymore. They reached out to other entities. Nobody reached out to them. The county reached out to other entities, and nobody reached out to them.
What do you mean, like, take care of it? They pick it up off the ground?
Yeah. They go twice a week, and they take, like, bag recyclings out, what's on the ground. And if there's anything in there that shouldn't be, like people put umbrellas, tables. Like, there was a refrigerator in there once.
Yes.
I mean, that's what they do.
And do they get the money out of it?
So they get...so from us, they get $925 a year. If you recall, I think it was back in December, we gave them that county check. The county pays us for the recycling bins, and then we forward it on to them. That's what happened last year. And then same with the township. They also pay for that portion as well. It's township and village. So they get the township population and village population check for that work. But currently, we don't have it, so...
It's been pretty much heavily abused, really. I think there's a lot of stuff in there that does not belong in there. People aren't breaking down boxes like they should.
Right, yes.
They just stuff a whole box in there. It could be a big box, too, like a TV box or...
Bicycle boxes.
Bicycle boxes, yeah. I was thinking. But if it gets abused too much, then I think the county might take them away.
That's true.
Keep doing that. Don't want that to happen, but you never know.
Before we move on, did you get late fees from the bills not being paid?
Actually, there wasn't any. I think our credit card bill was due that day, and I paid it. So we didn't get any fees.
I don't know. Communications? Reports are standing, please.
I have a report from Victor Coleman. The letter that I created the last time we were together. Crystal emailed it to Victor Coleman, and didn't hear, didn't hear it. You double-checked, sent it again. And he responded with, "Good morning. Thank you for receiving this, as I did not receive the first email. I will escalate this to leadership today and follow up with you as I learn more." And that was April 2nd. So, thank you, Crystal.
And that's in regards to the streetlights?
Yes, yes. Where are we in the process? Why haven't we heard?
Thank you.
Crystal has been looking at some demonstrations for the utility programs, because as she indicated, the program that we have currently is going to expire at the end of 2025. So as soon as she gets that information, I'm going to do a joint utility and finance committee meeting. Okay. That's...we don't have all that information yet. I actually have my next one. It's either tomorrow or Wednesday. Okay. And then none of them are those. Okay.
So how many have presented so far?
So this will be my third one tomorrow. And I reached out to another one, but they never even responded, so...
Okay.
It's like an hour and a half now that they do, and then they give you a quote. So... Yeah. So we received an official request from the Historical Society to renovate and clean up the township room in the town hall. The Historical Society has agreed to fund $1,000 towards this renovation. And if, for some reason, they run a little bit over that, they're asking us to cover anything additional. With us pulling back the carpet and looking at the floor under it, they believe they can keep it under $1,000, so I would like to make a motion to approve them moving forward with the renovation next door. Do we want to put a number for... I mean, we can cap it if you want, not to exceed, I don't know, whether we want to contribute an additional $1,000, $500? Yep.
Maybe we match it?
Yep. We'll match it if they go over. Okay. So a motion to approve the renovation to encourage for $1,000 at the cost of the Historical Society, with the Village Council to match up to $1,000, should that renovation exceed that $1,000. I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to accept a proposal from the Historical Society to renovate the room across the hall from the council chambers. They're going to supply $1,000, and we're going to match up to $1,000 for them.
Lynn Sylvane?
Yes.
Louise Zista?
Yes.
Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Joey Downsack?
Yes.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Martha Frank?
Yes.
I just have a question. Since we aren't going to be able... I just have a question. Since we aren't gonna be able to do the three readings, can we waive a reading?
Yes.
On the third one.
Okay.
On the second one, we would waive the, make it emergency.
Right, it doesn't need to be emergency.
Just waive it, just waive the reading.
First reading, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one. Resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts as awarded in twenty twenty-five. Just the first reading. This time, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session, or have a motion to go into executive session with council excluding Lynn and staff, which would be Chad and fiscal officer.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session with council remaining in the session with the exception of Lynn Sylvain, Councilman Lynn Sylvain, and also including the village administrator Chad and the fiscal officer Crystal.
Second. Louise Zista?
Yes.
Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Jody Downs-Pock?
Yes.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Martha Prance?
Yes.
Lynn Sylvain.
Let's discuss litigation.